Good evening. Let's call to order the Planning Commission meeting February 24 at 7:00 p.m. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents and we are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. This Planning Commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the Commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the Commission for the consent calendar or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the Commission's authority, generally referred to as within the Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order simply because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the Planning Commission agenda. Please scan this screen QR code or click the Language Access and Translation link on the meeting agenda to read and listen along in more than 50 different languages. Use the Show Caption button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close the public hearing on the agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for public comments for the agenda item, which will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the Planning Commission meeting agenda. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic, for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording officer, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Pine.
Present.
Commissioner Saroni.
Present.
Chair Iglesias.
Present.
Commissioner Shukla.
Present.
Commissioner Fagoni. Commissioner Segura.
Present.
We have six commissioners present and Vice Chair Davis's absence is unexcused.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to oral communications. This is the public's opportunity to address the Commission on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after the public hearings general business section of our meeting. Individuals may only speak once during oral communications. This Planning Commission meeting is a limited public forum and the Commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the Commission's authority, again referred to as the Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are outside the Commission's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. This allows the Commission to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and to protect the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order simply because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. At this time, please submit a speaker card to the recording officer or raise your digital hand or dial *9 on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants, and speakers will have three minutes to speak. If anyone would like to speak on oral communications, now's chance. Okay. Because of the nature of remote communication, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, speakers are warned to limit their comments to subjects that fall within the Commission's authority to decide or take action. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on oral communications?
We do not, Chair.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close oral communications. This brings us to the consent calendar. I'll go ahead and open the public comment on consent calendar items. This time, please submit a speaker card to the recording officer or raise your digital hand or dial *9 on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Again, speakers will have three minutes to speak. Before we move to remote speakers, does anybody want to speak on consent calendar items? Seeing none, recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Not at this time, Chair.
Thank you. I will close public comment, and I will now ask for a motion from my colleagues. Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. I move the consent calendar as submitted.
Thank you. Would anyone like to second the motion? All right, Commissioner Shukla?
I second it.
Thank you. Recording officer, please conduct the vote.
The motion passes with six yeses and Vice Chair Davis absent.
Thank you. And then, what is the fate of that?
The fate is, sorry, appealed within 15 days on March 11th. And then I just want to introduce Gabby Ventura. She's one of our new planners. She had the consent item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our general business. We have one item this evening, and this is item 25-0191, which is to introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 19.67 Inclusionary Below Market Rate Ownership Housing Program in Chapter 19.77, which is inclusionary below-market rate rental housing of Title 19 zoning of the Sunnyvale Municipal Code to modify requirements for qualified retail preservation projects, adopt a resolution to establish a retail preservation incentive program for certain village center sites, and find that the proposed amendments are consistent with environmental impact reports for land use and transportation element and do not require additional environmental review. Is there staff report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Trudy Ryan, the city's Director of Community Development. I had to remember what my title was. I'm pleased to bring this program to you for your consideration. Village centers are a newer type of land use for Sunnyvale, and they were first identified in the 2017 Land Use and Transportation Element. However, since the adoption of the lute, as we call it, there have been changes in state housing laws that enable developers to build housing without all of the envisioned features in the village centers, including the minimum required retail and commercial spaces. This loss of retail in some neighborhoods means that residents would have to travel further to access neighborhoods serving uses. So, we have prepared a program for your consideration and recommendation to council that would amend the zoning code, and actually, we have a companion resolution that goes with it that would provide essentially a financial incentive to provide the commercial in exchange for the otherwise required below-market rate units that are associated with the site. If I could have the PowerPoint presentation, there we go. Wow, right on cue. So, I want to talk a little bit about the below-market rate housing program, a little bit about village centers, whether or not commercial development can be incentivized, what criteria staff has identified for eligibility of a village center site for this program. Go over the program a little bit with you, tell you about the feedback that we've gotten from developers, and then conclude with the staff recommendation. We've had, in Sunnyvale, mandatory inclusionary housing. We call it our below-market rate program since 1984. Initially, 10% of the units had to be reserved for the affordability levels, different for rental and ownership. Now, we're at a 15% requirement on for-sale that serves moderate-income households, and on rental, it serves very low or low-income households and low-income households. There are a number of other provisions associated with state density bonus law that provides some opportunity for concessions and waivers in a residential project when there is a minimum amount of affordable housing that's included. So, it's important to remember. As I indicated earlier, the village centers have been around as a concept in Sunnyvale since the 2017 lute was adopted, and they're intended to support the neighborhood, not just the development itself, but the larger neighborhood with options for living and shopping, less reliance on automobiles, and even serve as a gathering places for the larger neighborhood. We presented that the village centers would have an average of 18 dwelling units per acre. If there was nothing else going on, that's more or less the ideal density for a townhouse development. If you were to add a lot of commercial, you would probably have to go to some other styles of housing than townhouse, and maybe that was a little bit more a part of our vision. The minimum commercial is 10% floor area ratio, so that's the amount of commercial square footage compared to the entire land area. And the maximum would probably be about 25%. There really isn't a firm maximum, particularly these days as we've lost some commercial. I think we're a little bit more positive about allowing that. However, that is a challenge for a lot of the developers, and we'll talk about that in a moment. And so, the idea was to have each site develop its own master plan, but again, due to changes in state law, we found that we needed to create a master plan for all of the village centers, and that's currently in process. So, the state law has affected how we can implement those visions, that vision. So, can commercial development even be incentivized? There are a lot of different things that a developer will consider when thinking about whether or not to propose a development, whether or not to proceed with the development. Number one is how much does that land cost? And that's a market condition, but also, different sites have different market profiles based on their location or the condition, what are the surrounding uses. Obviously, the price of materials and labor for design and construction are going to affect that decision. The interest rates on, you know, how much is money going to cost? And then the time to develop. Different agencies might take different amount of time, and that, again, can affect how boldly a developer might want to move forward, how complex is their design? And, I mean, just be honest, what's their profit? Do they make enough to make it worth their while to do that? Local impact fees and development requirements are obviously also going to be a cost on development. So, we looked at different things, and the one that we really were stuck on was the below-market rate units. And if you look at other types of requirements that we have in Sunnyvale, the connection to the water sewer fees, that's a sort of pay-as-you-go for the service that you're getting and the demand you're putting on the system. Park dedication fees are, again, related to a citywide minimum inventory for open space. Transportation impact fees are associated with the impact that a particular development will have, but quite frankly, with most of the village centers, that's not a big factor because of those changes in land use. School impact fees are also a financial consideration, but Sunnyvale's not in control of those. Those are totally the school districts. And then we have the 15% of the units is below-market rate. With the program that staff is recommending, where either half of the or all of the below-market rate units could be developed, and we've identified two of the village centers where the program might work, it would be as few as five or as many as 27 below-market rate units that we would not be achieving. So, what did we look at in the program? First of all, it had to be general plan designation for village mixed use. It could not be identified as a housing element site for lower-income housing. None of the village center sites are. We sort of covered that with the first bullet, but we also felt it was important to send that message that we're not trying to erode the lower-income housing, that it was important in getting our housing element certified. And then we also looked at how far away is it from other commercial? So, the closer it is to other commercial, the less of an impact it is on that neighborhood. We also focused on north of El Camino Real because we have another number of policies in the housing element to look for more affordable housing in the south part of the city. And then, we also looked at the village center size. So, the larger the village center is, even though the percentage might be lower, the square feet of commercial might be adequate for that particular neighborhood. So, of those criteria, only two of the village centers meet that requirement. So, this is a table. This is a similar table that's in your staff report, and you can see Village Center 5, which is located on Duane Avenue, and Village Center 6, which is at Lawrence Expressway at Lake Haven. Those two meet all five of those criteria. And I've included in this table what the walking distances are, the closest and the furthest. So, we use the furthest as part of our evaluation. And what is the program? The program is if you are providing more than 5%, and that's been some of the challenge, some of the sites have not been able to reach the 5%. So, if you're between 5 and over 5 and up to 10%, we would reduce your below-market rate requirement in half. So, 7.5% affordable to moderate for ownership, 5% affordable for low-income on rental, and 2.5% to very-low income on rental. However, if you're above 10% floor area ratio, then we would waive the BMR requirement. We talked to the developers of those two sites. We do have active conversations and applications for those two sites, and we did get a question was, are they still eligible to utilize the waivers that are in the density bonus law? So, that density bonus law entitles you to waivers and concessions based on how much affordable you have in your project. And our intent was not to cause them to have to significantly modify their projects to still get the same number of units that we were anticipating, understanding there might need to be some decrease, and also acknowledging that Sunnyvale has a long history of considering deviations through the special development permit process. So, what we've done is we've prepared a resolution as a companion to the ordinance that would allow, similar to the state density bonus, waivers from development requirements, and then one concession for a site. I did not have a lot of input from the community. We did send notices to property owners within 300 feet of the village center sites. I talked to five people. Some of them were just advising me that their address was not up to date, so thank you. We got that. That helped us straighten out another issue that we were having. And one person was particularly worried about the loss of commercial in his neighborhood, and that was on the Duane Center. And then, some of the others were just trying to understand what the program was all about. They didn't know if there was an active application, and in those cases, they lived near other village centers. So, the staff recommendation is to approve the Commercial Incentive Program Ordinance and Resolution and find that both of those, now I'm forgetting my word I wanted to use, Sandy? Both of those actions are exempt from CEQA. And that concludes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I will turn it over to the Commissioners, and the first Commissioner we have is Commissioner Saroni.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. And I'm really glad to see staff looking for creative alternatives to this. We've seen this issue now for some time, watching our retail just go out the door month by month and no way to stop it. It's kind of discouraging, and a lot of areas are just really losing their amenities or becoming grocery deserts or food deserts or whatever. So, I'm really glad that we're looking here at a program to attempt to address that. In my opinion, many of the state housing laws, which I enthusiastically advocated for, have not given us the intended outcomes. We really have not seen, in California in general or the Bay Area, we've not seen a significant increase in housing starts as a result. And since these bills, which some of them are not well-written, but their objective is only housing, one impact is the loss of amenities such as neighborhood retail and some, you know, walkability and some other aspects are just kind of pushed aside. Almost none of the intended objectives of village centers are being met, which is very unfortunate. And this hurts our quality of life and increases the vehicle miles traveled because people are going to have to drive to neighboring cities to buy things. So, I mean, in my view, our state and local financial incentives are dictating outcomes that we do not want. The, as mentioned in the presentation, the unlimited waivers granted for most housing projects we see means that in general, the quality of the developments has dropped in recent years. For those of us who worked in high-tech or working in high-tech, it's as if in order to increase production, we fired the Quality Control Department. If, you know, if some design requirements are bad, of course, they should be removed, but many of the requirements are there for reasons, setbacks and many other things. And right now, the waivers are automatically granted regardless of their merit. And I know HCD is focusing on housing in the high-opportunity areas, which we want for a number of reasons, but the result of many of the laws is to make the low-opportunity areas become even lower by just removing amenities and other things from those neighborhoods. So, just talking about a few, you know, alternatives or trade-offs, just to understand why this particular program was proposed. For example, I mentioned that California has not seen a dramatic increase in housing starts as a result of these many laws that have been passed, and there's some studies. There's one by the Furman Center that looked at housing in Seattle and showed that areas that offered density bonuses in return for inclusionary housing actually saw the number of housing starts drop in areas that offered the incentives compared to areas that had no incentives and no inclusionary requirements. And it's an interesting study because in Seattle, there were areas that had inclusionary requirements, areas that did not. And there are a number of other studies, some specifically for the Bay Area, that show the same thing. So, the, you know, the, well, of course, what we all want is more housing and more affordable housing, but it doesn't seem like we're getting it. So, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but hypothetically, if we got rid of all inclusionary requirements in the city, developments that did not include BMR housing would again be subject to our objective standards such as requirements for setbacks, architectural design, retail requirements, and so on. The, this is for developments that did not choose to include BMR housing because state law still applies. The unlimited waivers would go away, although they could still be requested and granted, and as mentioned, we have a history of doing that if they make sense. But, so, my question, and we may probably can't answer it here, is would the result of that be a lot more housing developments, although market rate, a lot more housing developments relative to the surrounding cities? Do we have any feel for that?
If I understand your question correctly is, if we got rid of the BMR program, would we get more housing? I don't think so. You know, there's so many different factors that are involved, and there's still a lot of housing law that would apply whether or not there are affordable units, but having the affordable units is an important component, I'll just mention, to the certification of our housing element. So, then we have a non-compliant housing element, and then you have sites that would be vulnerable that are not zoned for residential. So, I'm not sure it would meet the intended consequences, but I'm also not sure it would end up with more housing. And that's just a quick, off-the-top-of-my-head opinion.
Yeah, I guess you're saying the requirement for 15% below-market rate housing is not a disincentive to developers building residential projects?
No, if you think about how long Sunnyvale's had the requirements for affordable housing and the record that we've had of adding housing year by year by year, and that number has gone up over time, partially because the city's been aggressive about rezoning sites to accommodate residential. So, I don't think that it is the case in Sunnyvale. I couldn't speak for another city.
Okay. Well, that's interesting. Of course, the, you know, the general argument, I guess, against inclusionary housing is that it would increase more housing, and if you had more market rate housing, then all the rents would go lower, which would benefit more people over time. But, all right.
Well, there's economic theory, and then there's the actual what happens in Silicon Valley, which is always, appears to be a little different. Theoretically, the price of land is adjusted because of the other factors associated with development. development in that community, so the price of land could be less. Then again, this is Silicon Valley, and the rules of pure economic theory don't, don't always apply.
So, in this scenario that we got rid of the requirement for the inclusionary requirement, again, not that developers could not include it and, and would get the benefit of state law if they did include that, the state law, the density bonus and the waivers. But if, if they didn't want to do that, then for those projects, the, once again, the requirements for, let's say, a Village Center project, for outreach meetings and meeting objective standards and so on, those, those would apply. Is that right? If we didn't have the requirement, then...
If we didn't have the requirement for affordable units?
Yes, yes.
The other standards would still apply? For, for outreach, objective standards, yes, those would apply.
So, staff is also proposing to adopt, and this is a quote here from the, "The staff is also proposing to adopt an incentive program by resolution," and this is Attachment Three, "that would allow for concessions and waivers of development standards similar to concessions and waivers allowed by the bonus, a density bonus law for the, you know, the projects that are subject of this program." But I'm wondering, why is this a good idea? We, we can still grant waivers, but, and it just seems to me that many of the objective standards are not that onerous and improve the quality of the project. Under the current unlimited waivers, developers and architects, I mean, it seems obvious to me, are deliberately designing projects that completely ignore all of the objective standards. It's not like they tried to meet them and, and, "Well, here's a problematic one." They just, you know, they just ignore them. And the result is the Planning Commission is forced to approve what in previous years might be considered a badly designed project. So what do the developers tell you about the waivers? Are they a real deal breaker? Compared to the affordable housing, which, you know, they've got to subsidize for 20 years or whatever, a lot of these waivers seem very, very minor.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable agreeing that they're just purposely trying to get the waivers. I, I think more is what's happening on the Village, we're only talking Village Centers for, for, for this conversation, is that we are getting some commercial, which then effectively changes the density of the townhouse portion of the development, so it is harder to fit in the same number of units based on the larger site. So there are some constraints in providing the housing of a townhouse style. That is the type of housing that is currently marketable and, and doing well. But again, the economy will change and that, that too will change. But right now, that is the, sort of the best option for, for a developer, is, is that style of housing. And, and so the, the waivers allow them to fit things on the site a little more easily. I, I, I don't, I wouldn't agree with the statement that, that they're subsidizing the below-market-rate units. That, that all comes out of the factor of everything else that they have decided to do and pay. And so, once they sell the unit, they're done. They sell it as a BMR unit, they're done. They are, they've sold it. Right? If, if it's a rental project, it's a little bit different, but they have to factor that into what the rent they're going to be, when they're factoring what their profit's going to be. So I, they're, they're well aware of what, what that cost is.
Well, on, on that subject, the, and this has come up in previous meetings, but as mentioned in the presentation, right now, our requirement for inclusionary housing for, for sale units is moderate income at 15%. For rental units, it is very low at 5% and low at 10%. And, you know, and developers here have said that essentially, we're telling developers build townhouses because the economics incentives are, are there. And they have, they have said that. We ask, "Well, why, why didn't you consider rental?" And they point to this requirement that it's cheaper to do the for-sale because, you know, it's less onerous on them. Is, is that what we want? Are we intentionally incentivizing townhouses over rental units? Or, or should we look at equalizing these? So, I mean, half the city's rental, right?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we're, that there's no profit in, in rental. There's no profit today. We, we have plenty of rental developments in town. So I, I don't know that that's a statement that for all time, that's the case. At any given point in time, there are a lot of things that are going on out there that are beyond the city's control, but do affect how a developer will look at the potential for development. They don't stay in business if they don't get to develop. And so right now, the most profitable type of development generally is, is the townhouses. But we have plenty of apartments to show, over time, those can be profitable, too.
But the, but it is more expensive to do rental, I mean, like the exact same unit or whatever. Well, at least that's what the developers have told us.
Well, townhouses are less likely to be rental. It's very rare.
But there's also a more expensive inclusionary requirement for rental.
You, you just can't, you can't just substitute one thing for another. There's a lot of complexity for deciding what to do and how to do it. I, I think our long history of requiring the below-market-rate units and the success of, of projects over time, we just had 1,000 units built at the old AMD property. Rental, 1,000 rental and 100 for sale. But, but tonight, we're just talking about the Village Centers and whether or not that is an incentive you want to explore to get more commercial.
Okay, well, a couple of other things. The, and you mentioned the housing element, which I know is very important. And so, a requirement, some of the requirements here to qualify for this is that the area, the area is not identified in the housing element as available for lower-income housing. But, but if we did not have that requirement, as proposed, did not have the lower-income housing requirement, the developers are still free to include lower-income housing and get the state density bonus. So aren't these areas still, in terms of the housing element, still available for low-income housing?
Certainly, there is the potential for low-income housing. The, the general rule is it has to be more than 30 units per acre or designated through, because a project is in process that will be 100% affordable. But the 15% does not qualify it as an affordable housing site. It, it really has to be a much higher density. So there's a, there is a study, a program in the housing element to look at increasing densities in some of the Village Center sites, but more in the higher resource areas in the southern part of the community. So that is one of the reasons we've included that as a, as a criteria, is that it has to be north of El Camino Real.
And also excluded is anything south of El Camino. And I understand the reason for that, but I would not assume the retail in South Sunnyvale is, is safe. At Fremont Corners, the retail was almost eliminated. The proposed development of the Oss site eliminates a lot of retail square footage, so that is in jeopardy. But I understand we, on the other hand, we want to put more housing south of El Camino, so that's kind of a, a trade-off. On the, the walking distance to commercial, you know, the requirement is not located within 1,700 feet of walking distance via public street from any property zone, C1, C2, or MPAC. All, all retail is not the same. So we're saying, if you could walk to one store of any kind, that, you know, your retail requirements are met. And it, it seems like, well, like, for example, in, at Village Center Six, the Lakewood Center, at least on the maps, and maybe I'm not interpreting them right, it, it looks like the existence of a 7-Eleven across Lawrence on Fairwood meets a requirement that you could walk there. And so, commercial would not be needed there because there's a 7-Eleven around the corner, and that, that's the whole shopping center there.
Commissioner Serrano, I'm sorry to interrupt, but given that example, yes, the closest distance is less than, than 1,700 feet, but the furthest distance, if you go to the north part, well exceeds that. So that, that Village Center would qualify.
Hmm, okay.
So the, the Lawrence Expressway Lakewood Shopping Center would qualify under this program, and the Duane Avenue Shopping Center would qualify under this program. The longest distance is actually from the Fremont and Mary Shopping Center. But those are the areas south of, shopping centers. So those are the areas that are the, the, south of El Camino. And so that really wouldn't be eligible for this program for different reasons. However, if the densities are increased, that might provide its own incentive for being able to accommodate the commercial.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. And, and again, I know south of El Camino is not, does, is not eligible, but the, the maps were shown and, and specifically excluded our other commercial in the same Village Center. The, and the map for Fremont Corners that shows the, it shows, you know, the, the stuff that's been done there on that one corner, and then it points to the, probably the falafel stop or whatever there is, as a commercial. But isn't that part of the same Village Center?
No, that is not part of the Village Center. That is not included. There is a, an action item in the, in the land use and transportation element to consider adding it. I think at this point, we would recommend against that because you'd be losing more commercial land.
Hmm, mhm. How about the other side of Fremont?
The other side of Fremont is included.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. But not, not the other side of Sunnyvale Saratoga Road.
And that, along those lines, it seemed like in many of these cases, and this is a perfect example, there are four corners and they're, they're really, sometimes they're different owners, different conditions or whatever. It, it seemed like it would be helpful, not necessarily today, but as we go forward, to somehow separate those out because they're, you know, in this case, it was one that isn't even part of it. And, and a lot of times, it's, and, for example, the, the project we approved at Fremont and Mary had, had no retail and proposes no retail. So, but on the other hand, and the other side, it's a lot of retail.
Yeah. Well, and the site that was approved at Fremont and Mary had office, not retail.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So the underlying zoning district for that is office. And we'll, we'll be looking at that as part of the follow-up activities that we'll be asking for direction on for the Village Center Master Plan. So we'll be looking at whether or not there are any modifications that are warranted.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, right, that's what I'm saying, that it would be helpful to, to break that, those corners because they're different. Sometimes they're very different, sometimes they're not, so. And so, for BMR housing, the lower costs are locked in for some number of years, right? But how about retail under this proposal? They substitute retail. Can they revert to housing a week later, or?
No.
So it's the same?
It, it would be, it would be non-residential. Right? If they, if they built it as retail, the intent would be to have that as the retail component.
For?
For the, for the, for the development.
Forever, or, I mean?
Well, I would never say forever. I've only, I've only been here 35 years. There's no such thing as forever.
So, but is there, like, there's the deed restricted or something? Is there, is there a timeframe where, where they, where it has to continue to be retail? Or you're saying it would take an explicit action by the councilor?
I, yeah, at that point, it would be, it would be a modification to their approved plans and/or a modification to the zoning or general plan to accommodate something, something different.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. Sorry for the long-winded questions, but this is, I think this is very important and, and I'm glad we're doing something to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano. Next, we have Commissioner Shukla.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Trudy. I appreciate this innovative approach to incentivize the retail in our city. So I really like it because I, I really appreciate Sunnyvale's town because we are, we had a vision of Village Centers, and it's not happening. It's four, five years. I mean, it's happening, but it's not at the scale as the housing is happening as fast. And so I have two questions apart from your presentation. It was a great, a great article. I read everything because I joined, when I joined, this was in the practice for a few years back, so I learned a lot. So what is the difference between waivers and concessions?
So a waiver is essentially, there's a difficulty in fitting something on the site, whereas a concession is a financial constraint.
So the extra units or heights, and those are the concessions?
Height or setback, that might be a waiver. A concession might be undergrounding of overhead utility lines that are also serving adjacent properties.
So the city takes the cost of, like, how concessions are, the financial difficulty or what?
So the, a developer can indicate that they'd like to use a concession, not all do. And then it would be, it would be up to the city to determine if that's not the case. We don't have that many examples, but it, yes, those are costly items that have been asked for concessions.
That's great. And then, I was just wondering that, do you have any proposals from developers for Village Center Four, Five? I mean, is this idea came for, like, whoever, from the staff? Is that through the proposals?
Yes, we've...
What projects are there?
We, we've talked to the developers of the two Village Center sites that staff is recommending get, be included. Both of those do have active applications, and they're intrigued. They haven't confirmed that they will because obviously it depends on if the program is approved and if there are any modifications. And they'll have an opportunity to speak at your public hearing and at council's public hearing if they wanted to suggest any, any changes or to tell you it's fantastic and just go ahead and approve it. I would be okay with that, too.
So the Village Center One and Two, the already, the development is happening? Half of it, actually?
So, so Village Center One... So um, so Village Center one is Mary and Fremont.
Yes.
And one, one corner has approval, and they're, they're, there, there, there's no development um, activity currently, right? We haven't received building permits, or things like that. Village Center two um, has two pieces of, of the four lots at the south corner of Fremont, southeast corner of Fremont and Sunnyvale Saratoga. And one of them is completing construction, they do have some retail there. Um, the other one that was approved does also have some retail there. It's not the ten, minimum ten percent in either case.
So those will not be included? So we don't need to incentivize them to?
They wouldn't, well, first of all, they're already approved, but they would, they would not be included because they are south of El Camino Real, which is an area where we've said in our housing element, we're going to examine opportunities for some higher densities.
Okay, so that, because the eighteen, eighteen dwelling units, um, because of the area, like, because why can't we have a, why instead of, I mean, I'm just curious that you, this is a good approach, but instead of, like, completely removing the Village Center and have um, because it's not developed yet, maybe a couple of them, and then have the whole uh, high-density housing um, zone, you know?
Everything in, in, in its proper order. So we are, we are working on the Village Center Master Plan, which will establish the, the general layouts, the um, options for how the buildings can be arranged on, on the site. Um, we'll also present to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to City Council of, of modifications to, to the zoning and densities um, for your consideration. Um, but right now, we have two active applications in the north part of the city, so that's why we took this out of sequence and have um, come to you now.
Will you be share more about the application, are there for the housing and?
There, they, they, they have housing and commercial, um, but it's not, it's not the five or ten percent that the density program would, would enable.
Yeah, so I think in a way, we, they will still provide uh, some, some low-income housing cut into half because they are retaining the retail or commercial part of it. So that's, I think it's pretty good ta- trade-off. And um, so I think I really like it, and that's, these are my questions.
Thank you.
And great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shukla. Next, we have Commissioner Pine.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Ms. Ryan and, and staff for uh, their hard work on this and for the presentation. I thought that, I thought was pretty easy to follow. I did have a couple of questions. First of all, let's just follow up on that uh, about the sequencing. I, I appreciate staff's resp- I appreciate staff's ac- action to move promptly on the, on Village Centers five and six. I, I think that's, I think that's a good idea. I think that's borne out by the exigencies of wanting to make sure that we don't close, we're not closing the barn door after the horses have already left. Uh, but uh, is there some kind of uh, is there an ETA perhaps? And this doesn't have to be super specific on when we can expect to see the density increase, the uh, the report on the possibly increasing the density across Village Centers?
We haven't um, put together the full schedule on that, but when we do bring the master plan to you, which will come in several months from now, this summer? So we're almost there, right? It's almost spring, so it's almost summer.
Okay.
Um, then we'll, we'll, we'll have more of a schedule for you.
Yeah, I, I recognize that there wasn't gonna be like, yeah, I didn't need an exact date, but summer is, summer's what I was looking for.
For, for some areas, it will um, require more um, community outreach than other areas.
Just, I was just thinking just in terms of like quarters, so that's, that's what I was looking for.
Sometime after summer, how's that?
Yep. Uh, the other que- question I, the other big question I had was, and this was kind of follow-up some, some of what Commissioner Seroni was saying, but uh, first of all, uh, there's. Uh, there's us. I, I, I get the distance requir- I understand the distance requirements, I understand that it would be kind of hard to analyze this programmatically, but is there any way we can give any kind of consid- do give kind of consideration to what's on the site versus what's nearby the site? Because the example I'm very specifically thinking of, just to kind of make this concrete, is Village Center four, you have The Luckys at Village Center four, which is one of, by my analysis, two large grocery, two like big grocery stores in North Sunnyvale between, between one oh one and, and the railroad tracks. Yeah, there would be the Shavas supermarket on Fair Oaks. Uh, there, there's some smaller, there's some smaller markets, but those are kind of like the two big ones. Uh, there, now, there's com- there's outside the Village Center site, there's some commercial right, right there. There's a seven eleven, there's like, there's, there's the Taco Bell across the street, which would serve as a, which would serve some other uses to like the, I get, to like the Pizza Hut there, et cetera. But like, in terms of just, if we lost that grocery store, then people, then there's like one even reasonable replacement any, anywhere that's in a remotely sensible walking distance, and depending on where you live, it might not even be that. So I'm just wondering if there's any way we've been, we're able to give some kind of consideration to type? And it's possible the answer is just, no, there's no way to do that, but.
I, I, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding the question, but if, if you're, you're asking about Village Center four, which is um, at Maude and, and Matilda, and then goes down Maude.
Right.
And whether or not we can um, make some changes to the zoning that's there right now? Do that more quickly, is that what I'm hearing? Is your question?
Uh, no. One, I'm lo- I'm look, I'm kind of looking at criteria three, which is about commercial sites and walking distance. And the idea behind, the justification is that, is that, you know, if there's commercial sites within walking distance, they ever should, the residents will solve an option for shop, for shopping. And, and I, and I fully follow that, but like, my concern is just if they, if the option for shopping isn't any, isn't, is, isn't a replacement, or isn't even really in the same category.
I understand. Um, so the difficulty is that we zone for retail. We don't zone for dress shop, or jewelry store, or grocery store, right? So the same building that's a grocery store could become some other use. It could be a furniture store. Um, don't get much food out of that, but the same space, right, would still be considered retail. So saying because there's a grocery store on the site i- is not, is not a re- a factor associated with retail. Um, that's a different kind of issue in terms of whether or not the grocery store would even want to stay there. Even though it might be convenient, maybe that's just not, you know, working well for whoever that retailer is. And we've had grocery stores close um, and turn to other uses. Some of them have become gymnasiums, that, that's a pretty popular thing.
Yeah, I, I'm-
But we also have smaller grocery stores. We don't need twenty thousand, sixty thousand square feet. We have some two thousand square foot grocery stores, specialty grocery, um, that can meet some of the immediate needs of a, of a neighborhood, but certainly wouldn't be for all of their weekly shop.
Yeah, and there certainly are smaller groceries in the broader vicinity. I just, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna spend the time trying to map and analyze all of that, uh, the-
Yeah, I, I, I just, let me add, if, if it's all right. If I just measured the distance to a grocery, to another grocery store, that grocery store could be gone tomorrow. So that's not, that wasn't a good factor for distance. Um, uh, so we, we chose a site that could accommodate groceries in some manner, whether it's there today or not.
Yeah, and I, and I certainly appreciate staff's approach, looking, staff's approach there. I'm just, it, it's just one, and given that we don't have any applications pending on, like Village Center four, I don't, I think that this is something we can circle back to when we get back to like the density factor. It's just something that, it's just something that I'm concerned about, kind of from a higher level. Uh, I don't think we need, I don't think we actually, I, off the top of my head, I can't think of any kind of, I don't see the need for modification on that. However, I do notice that we have a, that we have several, that we have several members of the public here, both in person and online, and I'm very interested what, what you all have to say on, on this item, and will certainly be taking that factor, that feedback into consideration when it comes time for a motion after. So uh, with, so I'll put my hand down, and I'm looking forward to the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Uh, seeing no other commissioner hands, um, the only comments and questions I have, first off, wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation. Um, for those of you that are present with us, and those of you that have dialed in, some of the context for my own excitement about this is because our commission, uh, ha- as Commissioner Seroni has said, has seen a lot of our, our retail go the wayside. And so, um, which I think is detrimental to the quality of life in Sunnyvale. Um, and so I'm excited to see something that could potentially um, find ways to bring back retail, or make retail um, more, more incentivized. Uh, my question for, for the staff is, um, as you build this, uh, you must have some measures of, of what you think success would be. And Commissioner Seroni also mentioned the fact that there have been a lot of state laws designed to incentivize housing, which haven't really been, the, the effects haven't been seen yet. Um, but when you think about this, if this were passed, um, and you were to look down the road in a year or two, what is, what is success of this, if this is passed? What does this look like?
That the two um, Village Center sites that would be eligible under the staff recommendation would be able to increase the commercial over what they have now. Any increase we see is valuable.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I, um, as someone who will benefit from that, I, I'm, I think that would be wonderful. Um, seeing no other commissioner hands, uh, we will go ahead and open the public forum. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer, it's right up there. Uh, raise your digital hand now, or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Um, for your three minutes, and just as a point of clarification for those three minutes, those are your three minutes. Um, it's not really designed to be a dialogue, so by and large, um, you can raise questions and such, just don't anticipate them to be addressed at that point. I would ask that staff obviously take note, uh, and address those in aggregate afterwards. Uh, but by and large, again, this is not for the purpose of having an effective meeting. It won't be an opportunity to, to engage staff directly. Um, I will call it on members, uh, participating in person first, and then we'll hear from remote speakers, uh, and apologize if, um, if I mispronounced your name. First person I have is Hillel Hachlili.
Hello, my name is Hillel Hachlili. I live in the Lakewood neighborhood, and my house is just behind the Lakewood Shopping Center. And uh, this is where the, uh, going to be the villager number six. And uh, something that we suffer for many years is there is a nightclub in, in the Lakewood Shopping Center that have loud music, loud noise until two AM in the morning, many, many evenings. And I like to ask to add restriction to all the new project, all the new villager, that you cannot have, you cannot allow in the commercial area to have a nightclub, which is so part of it. Because nightclub is a noisy thing, could be in downtown area, but not in residential area. And we tried, okay, we cannot stop this nightclub to bother us for years. So that's why I like to make sure that we add restriction on all the new project, that nightclub is not allowed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have Chuck Braley.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chuck Braley, and I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. Uh, Sunnyvale needs both affordable housing and retail. This proposal seems like a pretty good balance, and well-thought-out balance between these two needs. The two Village Centers that are addressed by this, the Village Centers five and six, are in areas of Sunnyvale with few other retail services. For these two locations, I think it makes a lot of sense to trade off reducing the amount of affordable housing for additional uh, retail space. This trade-off may not be, uh, make sense in other parts of the city, but for these two Village Centers, I think the city needs to do everything it can to maximize the amount of retail there, and I want to uh, thank staff um, in the city for considering uh, innovative solutions like this. Um, and also just had a one quick uh, kind of suggestion, if you're doing future presentations or outreach on this. Uh, the floor area ratio calculation is a little bit complicated to understand. If it'd be possible to include like some examples, like for Village Center five, um, if it has between, I don't know, whatever it is, ten thousand to thirty thousand square feet of retail, then it would fall into that first tier. If it's over thirty thousand square feet, it falls to the second tier. But if you could make it, uh, just a little bit easier to understand, um, because that floor area ratio is a little bit complicated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next, we have Juvin Abraham.
Hi, um, I'm a resident of Sunnyvale Estate, probably near Duane. I think that's maybe the village number, center number five, if I'm not wrong. Uh, I've, I've not actually received any of the notices. I think that's, the lady before mentioned that notices were sent to the residents that three hundred feet away from that resident. If it is, if it was sent, I'm assuming it was sent out, but me and most of our neighbors that I'm aware of have not received it, or are aware of this new Village Center has been developed. So I just want to point that out. Uh, I just came up to this because I just got to my notice that this meeting is going on. Personally, um, I'm certain a lot of the neighbors would also have some opinions about this, in fact, that we are concerned about the food desert that is going to be created, the fact that it's not going, there's not many grocery stores or local rest- uh, restaurants close by if this Village Center five was to, uh, was to be actually uh, created. Right now, a lot of local businesses would, would be, uh, we're kind of pushing them out. And I think the lady mentioned that there's right now not an incentive for these builders to come up with commercial real estate, right? So why are we actually getting rid of existing commercial real estate that location, Village number five is essentially all restaurants and, and grocery stores? So why are we getting rid of commercial retail and trying to get housing there? I'm a big fan of bringing in housing in, but maybe we should probably focus on some abandoned, there are a lot of abandoned lots, right? So um, that is one of the comments that I wanted to make. Uh, also, as far as commute, the, the closest, if we, we had to get rid of Taj Mahal and that, the, those grocery stores, I think the closest one is a gas station. Maybe that's the place that we can probably go to, or maybe a seven level that is definitely not walking distance. If it's walking, it's probably twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five minutes, maybe thirty minutes one way, so maybe half, one hour of longer, maybe at least half an hour up and down. Uh, the other thing is also the fact that AMD, I think there was given an example of, we have AMD complex where you had a lot of housing, that's awesome, right? I like that, that helps with the schools. But then, I was very excited because they said they're going to start a marketplace. But there's actually, the marketplace doesn't have any groceries, or it doesn't have any actually useful things. They probably have a few tidbits, can go there maybe if you want to go on a date or so, but there's nothing really useful for come, for commercial reasons. So if they're trying to get rid of the existing, the, we have a, maybe a dozen or so different restaurants there, you have a hair salon, you have taekwondo, different things, so I'd like to keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that is the last speaker card I have. If there are other folks who would like to speak, you are welcome. Um, otherwise, I will be moving to remote speakers. Okay? Um, remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to the agenda item being considered. Speakers are ruled out of order, um, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Again, this is in reference to the uh, retail incentive proposal. Um, and then also, I want to advise, uh, folks who want to speak online, uh, you are also encouraged to identify yourself, it is not required, though. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, we do, Chair. I'll go ahead and start off with Courtney Jensen.
Thank you.
Courtney, you have the floor to speak first.
Um, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we have.
Awesome, great. Uh, my name is Courtney Jensen. Uh, tonight, I am speaking on my own behalf, and I am a resident of Lakewood Village. Uh, I want to start by saying thank you for the work that has gone into this proposal. Um, I know I have come before, not the planning commission, but council in the past, about concerns about where the Village Centers, um, is going, and I really appreciate the time that staff has taken uh, to come up with this proposal, and then to actually present it tonight. Um, I read through it, and I have maybe just a couple of thoughts, which basically go, come down to the fact that I would really like to see uh, the city ask for even more. And looking at the slides, we already have a low fifteen percent BMR requirement, and it feels like offering a seven point five percent BMR requirement for just five to ten percent FAR for commercial. And it feels like offering a 7.5% BMR requirement for just 5 to 10% FAR for commercial is giving away too much. I like the scaled approach that was presented tonight, but I feel like there needs to be a stronger incentive for people to go with more like 10 to 20% commercial instead of 5 to 10%. Yeah, we're going from 100% commercial and retail at these village centers to far, far, far less than 100%. I would also like to say that if it's possible for there to be a preference for the people who are currently owning businesses there, so they can get these rentals at an affordable rate, that would be fantastic. As others have mentioned, these businesses are critical to our community and the particular owners of these businesses have supported our community in many ways before. If that's not an option, is it possible to prioritize small and local businesses as opposed to chains? Particularly in terms of like restaurants and retail, maybe less so groceries. And then I would also like to suggest in terms of community outreach, that staff reach out to the Lakewood Village Neighborhood Association Board. I resigned from that back in November, but the board is still active. And they would love to help bring staff to a community meeting within Lakewood so that you can present this information and get feedback from our residents. It's easiest to email them at board@lvnasv.org. So I thank you again for your time, I really appreciate it. I'm excited to see where this goes and to keep retail in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Gail Rubino.
Hi, this is Gail, can you hear me?
We've got you.
Okay, great. So my name is Gail Rubino, I'm speaking on my own behalf and thank you very much for this. I feel like these village centers are something that's pregnant and just never, never comes to fruition. We've been promised a new outlook on this for at least three years and now it's being pushed out to the summer. I really eagerly await what we're coming up with. I think what we're coming up here, and it's probably because I don't understand it, and I think Chuck mentioned this. On page nine, I don't know what the percentage of FAR would be, but these, the village center on Duane has currently 57,600 square feet of commercial. And the one on Lake Haven is even larger at 64,068. And on the FAR, I don't know what that means. Is it 10% of that 68,000 yada yada? Anyway, if someone could explain that, that would be really great. I think the problem is, is we started out with a bad concept on these village centers and we're trying to fix it. And as much as I appreciate what you're doing, Trudy, and I really do, I think we need to really figure out, is this going to work? And you haven't really gone into tonight what the developers think about this and whether or not we can get, you know, at least 30,000 to 40,000 square feet of retail in both of those pieces of property. I'm going to yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Agnes Spite.
Good evening, Commissioner, staff and members of the public. My name is Agnes Spite, I am a member of livable Sunnyvale and tonight I am speaking on my own behalf. Over the years, I have spoken to our city's need to build more affordable housing as well as retail. Tonight, I am conflicted because my understanding of staff's proposal is to entice developers to build retail over affordable housing by eliminating the required inclusionary percentage for these select village centers. This proposal concerns me because this could be a slippery slope with over time, the 15% inclusionary rate being threatened. I hope as we move forward, Sunnyvale's leadership will not let the inclusionary rate be threatened should this proposal be approved. And I do appreciate staff's work trying to reach a happy medium between retail and housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Douglas.
Hello, my name is Zadorey Goodell. I apologize, I can't figure out how to change the screen name, that's my son. I'm a resident of Lakewood Village and I am participating in this meeting today in support of incentivizing, maintaining as much retail as we can in the Lakewood Village. What do they call it? Village Center? That would be number six. I really appreciated some of the comments that Courtney Jensen made earlier that I, I wonder if it is possible to ask for more from the developers in terms of the size of the retail? And also to incentivize that we maintain some of the smaller businesses that are currently at the shopping center because those businesses such as the Newing Wing Market and the dentist's office and all the restaurants have been there for a really long time. And they're great businesses and I would like to see them stay in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Alex Kay.
Hi, can you hear me?
We've got you.
Great. Hi, I'm Alex Kay Cost. I live in the Lakewood Village and I'm here speaking for myself. I value affordable housing. I believe that affordable housing implies affordable living. And I think that's why, just to get out, I do think that this is, you know, definitely a step forward in the right direction of, you know, creating more retail space for everyone that is here. Because regardless of if a place is affordable, we need to be able to live and support each other. We also have these, I understand eco goals of, you know, less driving, more walkability. And I very much resonate with the original idea of the village centers, systems of walkability, mixed use. I'm all for that. I think I'm kind of also repeating and echoing Courtney to say that I wish that we were pushing for more. I wish that instead of it, from my perspective, it does feel a little like we're negotiating with, between laws and incentivizing developers to find, you know, a solution that works within those constraints. But I understand, it feels to me that the incentive, the intent of state law is to increase housing with the implicit intention of increasing livability as well. And I know we're following, you know, what we, the rules as we understand them. I don't know anywhere near as much as you guys do, but I believe that we should be able to push for more. And I would love to see solutions that don't make this feel like a zero sum game between the pores and the people that live here that want to still live here and feel like they're, you know, able to actually live and not just sleep and leave. So I would humbly request for more, more, more affordable housing and more, more, more retail. If that means working with the state to change some of those, to add exceptions to the state level. If that means incentivizing developers to continue to build bigger rather than just switch one for the other. Those seem like better recommendations or better solutions than losing one thing in lieu of the other. And I yield the rest of my time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And Chair, we have no further remote speakers.
Thank you. We do have an additional in-person speaker and our next speaker will be Vitesh Bhattar.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So I wanted to bring about the village center five, especially on the Duane. So I have been living in that area for eight years and over the time that area has some really good small businesses and small restaurants are building up, which helping to build the community. Because of Redwood Place, which you mentioned, we already got thousand plus units. So we are getting lot of these new townhouses and rental property. But if we remove all these small businesses from that area, 7-Eleven does not fulfill all your fresh groceries requirement, which we can go to Taj Mahal or the new restaurant like came, Momo Kitchen and all. We need some good restaurant, good local community in that neighborhood. Because all around that neighborhood, if you see, it's all Vale Community came, Fusion is there, Redwood Place is there. And we are talking about more and more residential. So I would recommend like we promote the local businesses, local small shop. Those are like haircut shops and all are there. So we all community go there to go, to fulfill our needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And recording officer, do we have anyone else online?
We, no, nobody did not share.
All right, thank you. I wanted to thank everyone for your participation tonight, your attendance and your questions. And I want to give city staff an opportunity if there are any things that you wanted to respond to.
Yes, thank you. First thing I wanted to say is 10% floor area ratio for a four acre site would be about 26,000 square feet. So that's not a lot compared to what might currently be there. It's probably more like 20% there right now. And on a six acre site, it would be, excuse me, did I say that right? Six acres, 26,000, four acre, 17,000 and change. So thank you to the community for that input. I forget that people don't know it, I know, right? And then there was, there were a number of comments about incentivizing smaller businesses and/or existing businesses. When these sites redevelop, I'll make sure that our, that our economic development staff can reach out to those businesses. They probably can afford the rents at the smaller centers. They may not be able to afford rents at a newer shopping center. So for the sites where they can preserve some of the existing retail space, that sometimes can work out pretty well. We're seeing that on Fremont Avenue where the Jake's Pizza was retained and they've been able to keep going through construction. But I don't know that that's going to be the case. And I did want to acknowledge that it's not as much retail, the incentive is not as much retail. We do have two active applications, so trying to work within the framework of where they are in the process. So we are, we are kind of responding to conditions that are out there right now. And it's not the end of what we can do with the village centers. It is a start. The concern that the 15% inclusionary rate could be threatened, I will, I will bear that in mind as we look at our other studies. We're studying 20% right now. So we will be back in front of the planning commission, Housing and Human Services Commission and City Council on that front later this year. Toward the end of this year. I think that is all the questions that I heard. Is there anything else?
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will close the public forum, public hearing, and I will ask for a discussion or motion from my colleagues. And first, I have Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, just one question following up on something a member of the public said. That there was a, there was concern about a nightclub use at one of the village center sites. Does staff have any comment regarding the noise, noise concerns slash any special, any particular use permitting or other, other specific things relating to that use?
Yes, thank you. I did neglect to address that. So a nightclub use under today's zoning regulations would require a separate permit to be able to have any, any kind of entertainment and alcohol, that combination in particular. And I think the proximity of, our experience is better informed in terms of the proximity to other residents. And it, that would have to be considered. But it is a use that the zoning district would allow to be considered, but that doesn't mean it would be approved. As we further develop the zoning regulations for the village mixed use center, we can look and see if, if it makes sense to exclude that from, from the list in the future.
Thank you. I, I was like, I think I remember seeing that in the zoning, in one of the zoning tables in the zoning code, but I know, you know that far better than I do, so.
Well, we do also have experience from the past where those were not regulated and the uses had been there for a long time before we had those types of regulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Next, we have Commissioner Fegoni.
So I'm actually in favor of the, trying to, trying to keep the retail. I was just looking on a map, actually. So Lakewood is not that far from Levi's Stadium. So there's a lot of potential there for the city, for people, you know, in the future, if we keep some of that retail. You know, you know, you got soccer games, football games, concerts. So to me, it's just, it's one of the last areas between there and Santa Clara where people could ride their bikes, they could walk. So I really think it's critical that we do try to preserve some of that retail as much as we can. So what's gone is gone forever. And so I think we have to think about that. And the other thing too is state laws change. So there's nothing to say that in five, 10 years from now, state of California isn't going to change their housing crisis. And so I think it's prudent that the city looks forward and thinks about what could happen in the future and try to preserve things that might be gone. So I really, I think it's key, I appreciate what Trudy's trying to do. And it's a very creative way to do it, to work around the state laws and try to get that balance. We're not trying to break any law here or anything, but we are trying to look out for the future because that's, that's what we're here to do for the city. And I think it's, it's very important that we try to preserve what retail is there. Even those percentages of 10% that you were talking about, if we even kept that or 15%, is a small fraction of what's there. But I think we need to think about the future, what types of businesses might want to go there. You know, maybe we should do a study and see, you know, what, what types of business might want to relocate there. And that might help us decide what that percentage should be as far as what we want to grant for retail. But that's just my thoughts on it. But, and I know there's a balance between affordable housing and retail, so it's always going to be contentious. But I really think we have to think about the future and where things are going to go in the next 10, 15 years. Are we going to be in these same situations? Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Fegoni. Next, we have Commissioner Saroni.
Thanks, Chair. I just like to quickly take another pass at why we are not including the other village centers north of El Camino. And Commissioner Pine already talked about village center four. And, you know, granted, we can't guarantee anything is going to stay there forever. But if, if we don't do something different, we can kind of 100% be sure that the retail is just going to be gone there. And the fact that there is a, whatever, a Taco Bell or a Red Gas Station on the corner is really not meeting that need. And why was village center three excluded again?
Village center three is too large for what we're looking at. So the larger the center is, the more, the, the less difficult it would be to provide commercial in that neighborhood. So even a lower floor area ratio could be the same sort of square footage that we might see at some of the other village centers. So it, it didn't qualify from that size perspective.
Kind of seems likely though, that based on what we've seen at other centers, definitely they could put retail there, but they probably wouldn't, right?
Yeah, some of the things that we're looking at for the village centers, and we'll bring this with the master plan for you to give your recommendation to council is, do we want to cluster the residential on some portions of the site to assure that other portions would be commercial? So we're, we'll evaluate all that. We just have some active applications right now that we were more concerned.
And I guess the other one is village center seven.
Village center seven actually has, the majority of it's already developed. It's on the east side of Fair Oaks and there is a grocery store there. So it's in less bad shape, if you would.
I guess, so what's the, what would be the downside of including these? I mean, if we want to, if we want to incentivize the retail? And just talking about north of El Camino, but what would be the downside? The downside would be that we think maybe we would lose, I mean, of course, the affordable housing is, is very important, but it doesn't seem like in the grand scheme of things that the, the city, that we'd be losing that much affordable housing in order to get the retail there.
I think the, the primary factor on, on, I think the, the primary factor on, on, on 4, 5 and 3, 3, 4 and 7, 3, 4 and 7 is that there is sufficient area and that there may be some opportunities in the future based on their configuration to reserve some areas for retail. So I think there might be some other solutions that we can employ on those, on those sites.
Are you saying the Village Center Master Plan might explicitly require retail on portions of these?
To implement the plan, we would have to come back with zoning that would, that would clarify that. But we couldn't, we cannot reduce the number of housing units that would otherwise be enabled.
Right, right.
And we'll look at that in, in Village Center 1 as well. I mean, certainly if the planning commission feels very strongly about it, you can recommend inclusion of other, other sites, which means you would have to either change the, the minimum size or eliminate the, the minimum size? Or walking distance?
Right, right, okay. Well, I think that might be worth looking at and this will go to council and then they can finally decide whether it makes sense or not. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seroni. Next, we have Commissioner Shukla.
Thank you. I mean, I just raised my hand because I just want to say something. The, because everybody's asking that we should save those things. But the, I'm just bringing the other side of it. The property owner is like losing, I mean, surrounding properties who are not have, who don't have the grocery stores or retail, probably they are making lots of money on their property. And that's why the Village Center did not get fulfilled because they just, they have this, they just do not get enough return with selling the properties or evac. So I think this, I mean, those, so my concern is that we, whatever we do, but that stores, we, we cannot save it because the property owner probably just sells to, I mean, it's like they are the leasing for 10 years or whatever. So, and they may go away and they may open somewhere else. So I think it's, it's not up to city or, I mean, that's what I believe, that there is a market factors. And we want to develop the land and we want to make sure that they create retail and it's going to be efficient retail. Because the new, like there is a grocery outlet on, in Sunnyvale and that's very effective. It's very small and parking is there, apartments are there and also the Whole Food in downtown. So I think the Lucky is like huge parking lot, it's not a very efficient development. So I think even though it might have a less percentage of, or less square footage of retail, but it will be designed more efficiently. So I, I, I think this is a good idea and then affordable housing, of course, we need that. Our Sunnyvale has fulfilled all the housing elements, all the housing which are mandatory required from state. So I think we are doing really, really good job. So I think we can little bit sacrifice on that, not really completely removing it. But we want our developers to also make money and they, they, to intensify, so they develop the land. So most of the people are holding on to those land because they, it's either small, it's very small or they have restrictions of some zoning. So they can't make money by selling the lot. So I think that's what is happening and we are, so there are a lot of factors. So I understand everybody's concern and I'm sure like they are juggling. But I think it's a good idea what, I'm sure council will have more ideas. And I seriously think it's a really good basic proposals and we should, we should definitely move forward with that. But that's just my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Shukla. Before I move to Commissioner Seroni, I just wanted to share some of my thoughts and feedback as well. First, I appreciate Ms. Ryan, the, the pressure, the time pressure that you've introduced in this particular situation that we have to right now or before us. And it's, that time pressure is also what makes me think that I would be supportive of the, of the proposal as is simply because this is not binding from us expanding this. I view this almost as a pilot. I think, I mean, if anything, my concern is of all the tools that are available to incentivize retail, you've made it pretty clear why the BMR is the, the tool to use. But I think what we'll have to see is if that's actually sufficient. Because it's obviously not just about getting the retail, but it's about having active live retail. Having empty storefronts is in many ways worse than no retail. So I think that we'll have to see and, and part of me likes the concept of using this with the two that are available now with that time pressure, see how that does unfold. And then look at actually making this more of a, of a wider policy that's been informed by data that we've been able to collect. I think that also it, to me, it's been clear that there, there is a net benefit to the community, to the surrounding areas. And then it also still does result in creation of housing. So I, I think that for me, I will be supportive of this as is. Commissioner Seroni.
Thanks Chair. I just wanted to clarify that this is an incentive being offered to developers. But any developer is, even for these two village centers, is perfectly free to completely ignore this and do the, do the 15% BMR as previously.
Yes, they could decide not to take advantage of the, of the program. And they would, excuse me, proceed with the 15% below market rate. Correct?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Seroni. And any other commissioners with comments, discussion, a motion? All right, Commissioner Shukla. Turn your mic, one second, your mic.
It's like going backwards. I can make motion and I think I'm, I'm, I'm really, I'm really in favor of this, this proposal. It's very innovative idea and we, whatever the land we have, that's where we have.
Commissioner Shukla, if you just want, you'll, you have an opportunity. Yes, if you want to just make the motion.
So I, do I have to read or something?
Yeah, it's, if you, is it as, this staff recommendation?
So I, I make, I make motion for alternative one of what staff has suggested to.
I can, I can read it for you if you'd like.
Okay. To recommend to council introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 19.67 and Chapter 19.77. The first one is Inclusionary Below Market Rate Ownership Housing Program and Inclusionary Below Market Rate Rental Housing of Title 19 of the Sunnyvale Municipal Code relating to modified requirements for qualifying retail preservation projects in Attachment 2 and Adopt a Resolution, Attachment 3 and find that the ordinance and resolution are consistent with the certified land use and transportation element, LEET, EIR, and no further environmental review is required under SEQA guidelines. So that's it, yeah.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Commissioner Pine?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. And then Commissioner Shukla to your motion.
Yeah, I, as I was saying, I was getting, getting ahead of my time. But I, I think this is a very creative, I mean, we, we have only certain tools in our hands. And our city has taken the tool to, because we have been complaining of having, not losing retails since last three years. So finally, they have like, we have this, just few tools we have and we are trying to incentivize developers to like keep the retail. So, and also I think these are all market created forces. And I, I think that we have a lot of housing coming in the town. And I think also a lot of people are enjoying retail. So I think developers are listening and they are going to bring retail. But if we provide them some incentive, they will bring retail. They may have to lose some money, but so they have to make money. So we don't want to force them to like have 15% below market rate housing. And also then definitely they are not even going to think about it. So this is just an idea and at least some, some people will come with creative ideas to include retail. So I think I am going to support this motion and I hope my fellow members support it. And also council will have a lot of inputs and also other residents will have input. So I'm for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shukla. And Commissioner Pine to your second.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. The, there's a few things I wanted to touch upon. First of all, I think given the state of state housing law, I think that an incentive, incentive based approaches are what we are going to be wanting to look at to get what we, to get what we want out of sites is because, given concessions and waivers, I think there's a lot to be said for offering carrots when frankly, there aren't a lot of sticks that are in our toolkit at this point. I think, I think this, I think this is in the right direction. I'm sympathetic to the comments made by members of the public wanting to know if we could get more. I, but I'm also looking at this and I'm, and ultimately, we wouldn't be able to get more out of this because at, after 10%, over 10%, we're just waiving the BMR requirement entirely. So to get more than 10%, we'd have to change the structure so that you'd get less at lower. So like if we want, so you'd get less at lower levels. And my concern, and my big concern about doing that is that ultimately, if we don't make the wave, if we don't provide sufficient incentives at the levels the developers are willing to go to, the developers might just say, okay, we're not going to participate in the program. Here is our, and we are using state and we lose, and we just end up losing a bunch of retail and that we wouldn't lose otherwise. And I, and I think that would be bad. And, but, and also counter to what we'd be trying to do. There were, I note that since we're just looking at two village centers, the total BMR loss, loss of BMR units is, as was discussed in the staff presentation at the beginning of this hearing, low, it's, I want to say, it's, it's in the small two digits. I don't, I'm not particularly concerned about a slippery slope here. I don't, I would, we're, we're just talking about the village, a couple of village center sites here. I do think that, I do think it might be worth look, when we come back to see the full Village Center Master Plan and we, when we come back to increased density, we might want to look at, we might want to look at expanding this, particularly seeing how well it does. I do think the originally envisioned Village Center plan frankly has failed. I don't think, like we can just, like I'll just, like we can just see this from, from the existing policy which is should include commercial components with a minimum of 10% floor area ratio. And I, we're already incentivizing under 10% in this, like I, I think we've, and I don't, I'm not trying, I'm not blaming anybody. There are certainly changes in the state law that had a significant effect on that. But I do think it's pretty clear that the originally intended program is not what we're getting. The, but, but yeah, I think it's worth, but I think it's worth looking at this. I think it's worth looking at how it does when it comes back. There are some other levers that, that, that we can pull. I, I recognize staff's concern about this. But I do think that, that the park fees are something we might want, that we might have to look at because that is a, because our park fees are fairly high and there, and there would be, I think, a lot of room for potential incentivization on that. But I'm fully, but let's not start there. Let's start with this. Let's hope, let's hope to have a positive outcome at the, at the impacted Village Center section. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Next, we have Commissioner Seroni.
No, thanks Chair. So I'll be supporting the motion. Ideally, I would like to expand it to all the village center north of Sunnyvale because again, it's, it's an incentive that's offered. It may or may not fit for some of them. And I would hope the council, when they get this, will, will take a look at those other sites. But my sense is we, you know, we don't have support for that. So this is absolutely a step in the right direction. It's a great work by staff to come up with a creative solution that, that might help preserve some retail. So I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner Seroni. Seeing no other commissioner hands, I also intend on supporting it. I, to the points that both the maker of the motion and the second and also Commissioner Seroni, I, I'm excited for us to do something that allows us to test, to allow us to collect information. And then to possibly look at other incentives as possible. Because I have no doubt that, to your point, Commissioner Pine, that in lieu of park fees, if you have really thriving retail, that's also a boon to, to the city coffers. So there's, there's a justification for getting that funding coming from somewhere. So I'm, I'm excited to support this and hopeful that, that we do see retail thrive in Sunnyvale. And to that end, our recording officer, please conduct a vote.
The motion passes with six yeses and Vice Chair Davis absent.
Thank you. And Planning Officer, what is the next steps?
Let me go into City Council on March 18th.
Thank you. All right, well, that concludes our general business. And now we are in non agenda items and comments. Next portion of the agenda is for oral reports, announcements by commissioners and staff to share. Planning commissioners, do you have any non agenda items or comments? Commissioner Pine?
Yeah, I noticed that the work plans are up for council review tomorrow. And I'd like to thank, thank staff for taking into account the feedback I had on, on conflicting with the Jewish High Holidays.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Any other, seeing no other commissioner hands. Planning Officer, do you have any updates?
Just a couple. City council meeting is tomorrow night. They'll be looking at the relocation assistance requirement that came forward to Planning Commission, I think, on February 10th. They'll be looking at the city code of ethics and then also looking at the work plans as Commissioner Pine had mentioned. And then on Thursday, February 27th, Sunnyvale Department of Public Safety will have an information night.
Thank you so much. And at this point, I'd like to thank everyone for their participation online and in person. And I adjourned this meeting at 8:43 PM.